For those of you just joining us, my name is Gray Murphy. I'm Chair of the 34th District Democrats. We are hosting today's forums. And we're about to have our Seattle City Council District One forum. I'm just going to share the rules. The introductory remarks in question were chosen by law, as was order of seating. So we picked names earlier. Each candidate will have two minutes to make introductory remarks. Each candidate will be asked the same questions and will have 90 seconds to respond to each question. The order of who answers will alternate. Each candidate will have one minute to make closing remarks. Questions were developed by a committee of 34th members, and we sought and received committee input for finalizing them. And no candidate received questions in advance. Our first forum today -- I'm sorry, our second forum today -- will be moderated by Rachel Glass, our First Vice Chair, and Chris Porter, our representative to the King County Democrats. And before we get started, I would also just like to again thank the candidates for joining us today. Really appreciate your participation and for putting yourselves out there to serve. I know it's no small task, so thank you so much. And your applause is a reminder, if you could withhold applause until the end of the forum, but that was lovely. That would be much appreciated. Thank you.
At the end of the forum, let her rip. My name is Rachel Glass. I am the First Vice Chair of the 34th, and it is my great pleasure to introduce the candidates to you right now. Phil Tavell, Stephen Brown, Rob Saka, Preston Anderson. We are expecting Jeanne E. Alacration, she's not here yet, and Maran Costa. So what I'd like to do right now is start with introductory remarks, and we're going to start with Phil Tavell.
Hi, my name is Phil Tavell, and thank you very much to the 34th Dems, to the West Seattle Blog. Thank you, Councilmember Herbert, for being here today to watch this. We thank you for your service. And really, thanks for everybody coming out. We obviously would love to see everybody in the community come out to hear all of us talk, because you're going to be voting for your next representative. So what I will say is there are two things that are very important for that representative. The first thing is they've got the skills and the experiences to do this job, to be able to go in and represent District One as best they can, but also to be able to handle the things that are going to come down the road that we haven't seen yet. We're all talking about public safety, we're talking about homelessness, we're talking about transportation, climate issues, and I think on a lot of that, we have very similar takes on it. But you've got to realize that one of the things you need to look for is who is going to be that representative that has the best chance to understand that next problem that we don't know about? Who's going to be able to handle that next crisis? And who's going to be here in the community? So I was a high school physics teacher. I worked for the National Science Foundation. I had a video game company in Pioneer Square that actually had 30 employees in it. I've been a retail store owner. I've been a public defender, did that for over 15 years, and now I've been an administrative law judge for the last two years. When COVID shut down the criminal courts back in 2020, the first thing I did is I started delivering food for the food bank, because I had more time and I wanted to serve my community. Then we had the West Seattle Bridge closed down. And when that closed down, I helped organize almost 6,000 people in this community to come together and have a voice, and we got a seat at the West Seattle Bridge Task Course table. And the fact is, this position is about public service, and I think that is vital, to understand that you want someone who is here, who's been around, who's accessible, who's accessible and who will be able to advocate for you. In my life, I have advocated for thousands of people in need as a lawyer, and I want to do that for you as your council member.
Thank you, 34th Democrats, and thank you all for coming out on your weekend. Phil, I couldn't agree with you more. It's about the skills and talents for how to handle the next problem. To that end, and because I'm going to lots of these forums, I'm going to tell a story I haven't told before. So when I graduated from college, my roommate and I decided we were going to be entrepreneurs together. We decided that because we felt like we could afford to fail. We had loving families, we had relatively high self-worth feelings, and we decided that the thing that was going to get in our way the most was fear. And we decided we wanted to try to find a way to take fear off the table. So the two of us sat down, we wrote ourselves this letter, and we signed it and printed up, took it to Kinko's and photocopied it, and mailed it out to all of our friends and family, which said that if we didn't embark on adventure together, we would forever define that as fear. And we did that to free ourselves up from taking a very human obstacle and repackaging it as an analysis. We wanted to say, this isn't an analysis, if we don't do this, it's because we're afraid, and that's okay. So when I decided to enter this race, I have lots of fear, but I decided to overcome it because I think I have the skills and the temperament to help Seattle get to its next stage. And thank you very much.
Go ahead, Rob.
I know this one works, okay. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Rob Saka. I am honored to share this physical space with you all. I'm a public school dad of three, Air Force veteran, attorney, public safety and justice reform advocate. Look, former head volunteer coach for my daughter's Little League baseball team. I 100% agree in the spirit of what we need in this community and for a leader in this specific seat, someone who's been a part of this community for a long time, someone who's committed to serve, and I can't help myself but to serve. I'm also proud to call Del Ridge home. Right across the street, so where I stand, right across the street, I've taken my kids, three of them, and they've enjoyed their very first swing ride. In the playfield, in the public waiting pool across the street, we've enjoyed that as well as part of the parks program. We've watched in awe at some of the skaters doing cool tricks at the skate park down here. So I'm honored and excited to be here in Del Ridge. And I'm told I'm the longest-serving 34th member, having been an active member for the past four-plus years. But I've been honored to be a part of this specific organization, and I would be honored to be your elected representative. At City Hall, I want to normalize collaborating across differences, finding common ground, and ultimately getting bold things accomplished that work and work for all of us. My plan is simple, folks. I want to prioritize public safety, including by hiring more police, and standing up alternatives to police, including civilian responses to certain mental behavioral health crisis situations. It's not one or the other. I also want to prioritize action on homelessness and building a ton of affordable housing. Look, also as part of my plan, I want to focus on the basics of what a well-functioning city government can and should be doing for folks. Look, I know there's a better way forward for our city, and I couldn't be more energized at the opportunity we have to do it together.
Hello, everyone. I'm Preston Anderson. I'm grateful to be here, and thank you for sharing your time today with me and the rest of the candidates. As I've gone out in District One and talked to folks, there have been recurring themes: crime, safety, behavioral health, and homelessness crises, including other issues surrounding affordable housing. But just want to talk quickly about those top three things: crime, safety, behavioral health, and addictions crises. The Seattle Chamber of Commerce and then also the Peach Sound Regional Council has done a survey over the last year and a half or so. They've done citywide surveys for the Seattle Chamber of Commerce, and then also the Peach Sound Regional Council, they've done countywide surveys of what are the top issues for constituents. And those continue to come up. And as I'm going out in District One and having those conversations, those issues come up as well. And I think it's so important, and I think everyone recognizes that we need to address that, but the thing that kind of stings me as I go out in the community, have these conversations, the trust is eroding a bit. People are losing a sense of trust. As I'm talking about the issues that we need to face and confront with the addictions crises and behavioral health crises, there's a degree of incredulity to folks as I'm having those conversations, and that really stings. And we have an opportunity to turn that around. I'm a clinical social worker, I've been in the field for the last 12 years. I've worked in addiction treatment, I've worked in trauma treatment, I've been working in patient psychiatric care. I've been at Western State working in forensics, and I know what works and what does not work. I could tell you a number of stories where I've had clients who will get placed in permanent supportive housing, and then six months or 12 months down the line, they'll have a psychotic episode that costs $10,000, $20,000 worth of damage. In fact, here in West Seattle, back in February, there was a situation where a person burned down their apartment, caused a million dollars' worth of damage. Some people are being placed in situations that are not clinically appropriate for them. So I have that perspective, and I hope to bring that perspective to City Council.
No, testing. Oh, there you go.
Hi, I'm Maran Costa. So my kids had another lockdown at school yesterday. A friend of mine's kid was held up at gunpoint broad daylight on Morgan Junction. We can all feel it, we feel like it's getting a little closer to home. We know we have big problems to solve, but we need leaders who will dig deeper, get to the root of the problem, and unflinchingly face the tough challenges and not try to simplify them and react in fear, but rather embrace the complexity, organize people around a bold vision and move forward. And that's what I've done in my career, in my whole life up to this point, and that's what you can expect from me when I'm on City Council. I was a leader in Big Tech for 25 years. I managed big teams, million-dollar budgets, brought competing teams together to solve the big problems and get more work done faster. But while at Amazon, I also realized that they had no climate plan, and they were treating their workers terribly. And as a mom and a dedicated employee, I wanted Amazon to do better. And so I organized thousands of my colleagues, and we took a bold stand and we got results. Our results, our actions resulted in Amazon's Climate Pledge, the $10 billion Bezos Earth Fund, and increased worker safety. And that's where I feel like my past actions, not just my words, serves a testament to what I will do on council. We need to address public safety. We can have officers who want to flee this town, or we can become the best city to be a police officer, and we don't need to lower our bar. We need to address mental health. We can have people who are arrested. Wow, that was past two minutes.
The time flies.
Thank you. You'll hear more of the issues as we go on, I'm sure.
Thank you so much, Maran, and all of the candidates for being here. I did just want to let everybody know, Jeanne has had a scheduling conflict, and so she's not going to be able to make it. So just be aware that if any of you were expecting her, just know we're down one. So let's get to the questions. The first question is, homelessness continues to be a crisis in Seattle that has not been effectively addressed. Seattle is a partner with the King County Regional Homeless Authority that was put in place four years ago to address homelessness in our region. The authority's progress has been questioned. Its five-year plan was just released after multiple delays, and its CEO recently stepped down. The authority is now requesting more funding. As a council member, will you continue to support the KC RHA? And if so, what will you expect for your continued support? If you do not endorse continuing support, please explain why, and we'll start with Phil Tavell.
Thank you. This wasn't the working one.
Thanks for sharing the mics, everybody. Where's our tech person?
Can I leave all of your wireless mics on once you turn them on, please? We thought we had, so I might have. So red light not on means good, correct?
Yeah.
All right, okay. Sorry about that.
Red light stop.
I think we're set now. All right, so yeah, so thank you. We need to support the King County Regional Homeless Authority. This is a type of issue that is not just for one city or for one location, it is for the region, it is for the country. In an interesting conversation I had with my dad recently, he made a very good point about the fact that if we look at the homelessness issue as a problem, it gives you this false sense of security that there is just a solution, and it's going to work itself out, and it's not. It really is more of a condition that we need to learn how to manage and manage effectively. It's going to come from a larger area, which is looking at King County as being the leader and Seattle as being the biggest partner there. We just had, I think, four or five new cities sign on in the northern part of King County, and that shows we're heading in the right direction. However, as a council member, I think it is incumbent upon us that if we are going to foot the majority of the bill for this, that we need to have more of a hand in figuring out that the providers are doing what they're supposed to, that we're spending the money in the right way, and that we're not wasting funds. I think a lot of us, as I talk to people on the doors and in businesses, it's very clear that everybody is concerned that we spend a lot of money on things that sound good, but that we don't necessarily spend money effectively on outcomes. And so we need to set out metrics, we need to set out specific deliverables, so that when we put billions of dollars into something like this that is meant to help people, that we actually do achieve those goals and we help them. So I want to be there to make sure that we can oversee this process with King County.
Stephen?
I also support continued participation and funding of the King County Regional Homeless Authority. I think they have a tremendously difficult job, and I have a tremendous amount of empathy for the ups and downs of that position. I agree with you, Phil, that we need to, as the largest partner and contributor to the King County Regional Homeless Authority, we need to be fierce advocates on the sidelines for that, the part of the Homeless Authority's efforts to help the Seattle situation. But it's definitely a regional situation that requires collaboration through a variety of entities. You know, I'm supportive of the Housing First approach, and I think that King County Regional Homeless Authority has been taking that approach. I think that the ins and outs of their politics should not distract us from their fabulous mission, and I continue to support their mission. Thank you.
Go ahead, Rob.
Yes, I would support continued supporting of the King County Regional Homeless Authority. These are highly complex and nuanced problems, they're very challenging. The issues, a lot of the issues and things that we see visibly here in Seattle, and I'm here to address both the root causes and the symptoms. I don't want to end visible homelessness, I'm here to end homelessness. And I think the King County Regional Homeless Authority, they help us get there. And so over and over, though, at the same time, over and over at the doors, in the community, people stopping at the gas station, you know, I'm the guy that wears a dashiki, even when I'm not wearing it, I'm being more and more recognized. But I've been out here for a long time, and as a candidate, people have shared their thoughts and their perspectives with me, and people want, in my sense is, people want to continue spending and supporting the Homelessness Authority. But what people do want in our demanding is better accountability for outcomes. And so I am here to end the blank check era of spending and support outcomes and drive for outcomes and results. I want to treat my work in the council across the board sort of like we did in the business community, setting ambitious goals, closely tracking and monitoring progress, and holding organizations and people accountable for results. And the King County Homelessness Authority is key to doing that. So yes, I support them.
Preston?
Yes, I support continued funding of the King County Regional Homeless Authority. So I worked for the VA Healthcare System. I've worked as clinical social worker the last 12 years, but I've been in social services for the last 15 years, and the bulk of that time has been spent on working homes programs. Started my career at the Downtown Medical Service Center. So I have a little experience with working with homeless populations. At the VA Healthcare System, we've cut veteran homelessness by over 50% for the last 10 years. So we're obviously doing something right at the VA, and obviously, one of the reasons is because there are certain standards that are in place for the VA, the homes programs. We have the commission on accreditation of a rehabilitation facility, so that's CARF. We have other accrediting bodies that keep standards within the system. So I would like to bring that to the city and also to the King County Regional Homeless Authority, work with them regularly through the coordinated entry system. But one of the key issues, like I said before, is making sure that we're placing people in clinically appropriate housing. So we need to expand it beyond permanent supportive housing to include also group homes, adult family homes, transitional housing, and other residential facilities that can treat the acute issues that face our most vulnerable population. So I definitely would want to, on the City Council, aggressively treat and house those persons that are vulnerable and dying on the streets. Quite personal to me, because I've lost a number of people to overdose deaths and dying in the street due to being exposed to the illness and being homeless. Thank you.
And Maran, go ahead.
I also support continuing the King County Regional Health Authority. The intent is good, creating a true collaboration across the region, streamlining processes to get people into housing faster, cutting down the paperwork, moving people into emergency housing. This is what we need to do, getting people into the place where they can get the care that they need, whether it's, you know, help to get past being one paycheck short of make and rent, or mental and behavioral health, or substance use disorder. So we need to keep these pilot programs that are, you know, we don't abandon them right away. This is things that I learned at Amazon. You try big experiments, you put them out there, you make sure before you launch that you have a plan, you measure, you set goals, you audit and make sure that you're meeting your goals, and if you're not, you fix it or you kill it. But I don't think we're at the point to kill it, but we need to demand and expect results. And as long as we have a results-driven, evidence-based approach to homelessness, we should be able to, we can solve this problem.
Thank you, candidates. Our second question is about housing. Living in Seattle is increasingly too expensive. Rents are up 21% in 2023 compared to 2021. The median Seattle home price is $740,000, nearly double the national average. What specific solutions will you offer to make sure there is housing available for folks getting priced out of their homes, working individuals and families, and all income levels in between? And for this question, we'll start with Stephen.
Yeah, the housing challenges in Seattle are profound. There's not just one solution for all the different types of earners and people who live in Seattle on fixed incomes. I'm glad to see that the Washington State government passed the call for greater density and doesn't allow cities to opt out. As a matter of fact, provides a kind of cover for cities to be more aggressive in calling for density. One of the ways that I would be more aggressive in is by raising the ticket price, basically, for developers who are building near transit to try to get out of, including low-income housing in their developments. I would make that prohibitively expensive. I would call for, in the 30 to 60 AMI building range, I've been talking to the folks at Community Roots Housing, I applaud their efforts to date, and organizations like that are able to highly leverage funds to provide housing for a range of people who we need in the city: nurses, teachers, factory workers. A great city has a wide range of people who've been living and thriving in it.
Thank you.
Yes, the housing and lack of affordable housing, more specifically crises in the city, is out of hand. Look, I'm thankful for I am today personally and professionally, but I'm also someone who's overcome the foster care system. And so I know what it's like to be down on your luck, and I know what it's like to feel uprooted and swept away. You shouldn't, and look, I'm a lawyer, and I've worked in tech and all these amazing things that I'm forever grateful for. You shouldn't need to work in tech, and you shouldn't need to be an attorney, you shouldn't need to be a doctor, or to afford to live in this city. It's out of hand. My father was a frontline warehouse worker, unrepresented in any union, but he was a frontline warehouse worker. So we didn't have a ticket in the middle class. Regardless, I don't care if you're a warehouse worker, if you work at a, if you're a barista, if you work at a grocery store, if you live in this city, you should afford to, or if you work in the city, you should be able to afford to live here too. And so I plan to prioritize streamlining the permitting process in the city. It is incredibly complex. You need to hire tech lawyers, sometimes I'm told. And we've chained on well-intended idea after well-intended idea after well-intended, to the housing, to the building code. And the result is this complex permitting process where it's extremely difficult to build. We need to build more quickly. And also, I share that sentiment. I'm glad the state legislature acted to reform the zoning laws, because there's more work to do there as well. So thank you.
Preston?
Yes, thank you. Hello, hello. So I've been pretty consistent on the campaign trail about the importance of social housing. As I've gone out and talked with constituents out in District One, there's been a mixed review of it, and reasonably so, because there's a lot of unknowns about it. But nonetheless, I think for Seattle to move into the future and be an international city and the city of the future, we do need to embrace that to ensure that folks at 120% AMI are able to be housed and not spending half their income on housing. Right now, we are addressing folks at a zero income to 50% AMI within the SCAL Office of Housing, and I think recently, they've increased set size up to 60%. For King County Housing Authority, it's up to 80% AMI. However, we're still missing our middle class. So we need to make sure that our middle-class folks are able to stay here in the city. We can do that with social housing. There's been a lot of discussion about our current council members about setting aside public lands for the use of building affordable housing. I hope to continue that effort, and I know we can do it. I've got 20 seconds left, but I think that's pretty much what we need to talk about, right? We need to make sure that it's affordable, people that are in the middle income bracket that are able to stay in Seattle, and I'm going to fight for that.
And Maran?
Yeah, in order to bring housing prices down, we need to increase supply. That's in some ways obvious. Social housing is one way to do that, it's fantastic. It's self-sustaining once we get it up and running. I'm a big supporter as well. We need to, you know, make sure that the people who support and run our city, our janitors, our security guards, our healthcare staff at hospitals, teachers even, we need to make sure that they can afford to live in our city for so many reasons, but just because that's the kind of city we all want to live in, where we have the ability to live and work close together. So we need to align our, like, I would love to see us align our need for good jobs, good living wage union jobs, with our ability to build affordable housing and build the affordable housing under a project labor agreement to make sure that we have the good union jobs to build that. We need to support renters through hard times, and the best way to keep people from being homeless is to make sure that they don't lose their house in the first place, and we need to support our small landlords so that they don't get priced out and bought up, and then there's a markup on the supply, and we lost our chances to keep that on the market. I would propose a vacancy tax. We have 30,000 units around the city that could be used. Phil, go ahead.
Well, I got to say, I get it, I'm a renter. You know, I understand it's difficult. For the last 20 years, I've been in public service as a public defender, now as an administrative law judge, and this is an expensive city. On the positive side, it's expensive because it's a gorgeous, amazing city that has incredibly successful companies that pay very high salaries to a lot of people. But there are a few things we can do. Within the Morgan Community Association over the last several years, one of the things we've looked at is a land trust, where we take people who are leaving out their homes, they're aging out of their homes, but they'd like them to be for a family that wants to have an owner-occupied, entry-level, single-family home, and we can bring these into a land trust so that it's something that's affordable. It doesn't have to be a $750,000 starter home. We can do something less when not everybody in the process is looking to maximize their profits. One of the other things is, right now, we need to look to upzone better. You know, we are talking about what are we going to do along the urban-village lines, and I think we actually need to add more density where we have better mass transit, because we can put more people in. The more housing you get, the more affordable it'll become. We're going to have a lot of open commercial space that we need to look to build cheaper apartments for people. apartments for people. And one of the things we don't have, if you look at other parts of the country, we don't have a mass transit system that means you can live 50 miles from Seattle and work here. I grew up in an area where people around me could live 75 miles north of New York City and then train in. So there's a lot we can do, but we have to look at a multitude of these answers.
Thank you, candidates. Our next question is on the topic of police. Some of you here on the panel are advocating for a larger police force, yet attracting and retaining officers is becoming harder and harder. There also is support for reimagining the role and responsibilities of the police department to create improvements in SPD services. What specific policies will you propose to help increase the recruitment and retention of officers, motivate improvements in the current police force, and lay the groundwork for public safety in all Seattle communities? And we will start with Rob.
Yeah, so, great question. The public safety situation in this city unfortunately is not where it can or should be. And I fought to lay the groundwork to keep the city safe by serving on the Police Chief Search Committee this past summer and fall, where we selected Chief Diaz. Look, these are highly complex and nuanced issues, and I understand, as a black man growing up in this country, I've experienced police brutality firsthand. That's how I know we need better police. But I was also one block away from the finish line of the 2013 Boston Marathon bombings when those bombs went off, two of them. And I'll never forget, and the chaos and confusion that unfolded, and I'm a combat veteran, by the way. And everyone was trying to figure out how to run away from the danger. I'll never forget seeing hundreds of emergency responders, including police, putting their safety on the line to protect us. So yes, we do need to hire more police. We're grossly undersstaffed. We should have between 1,400 and 1,500 officers deployable today. We have around 1,000. We have a recruiting and marketing budget to, you know, recruit more officers. And by the way, we don't just need like entry-level officers, we need more lateral officers. So Seattle has, is a big city. It's a big city that, you know, we're solving and working on complex, you know, criminal justice issues. We need to be selling that more to some of the officers in surrounding jurisdictions. And also, we need to, like I mentioned earlier, stand up alternatives to policing, including civilian behavioral health, mental health-related crisis responses. Thank you.
Preston?
Yes, we do need to increase our police force. How that gets done, I would like to collaborate with the police chief and those persons responsible for recruiting. Obviously, I don't have a specific answer for how that recruiting looks like and how it can be more effective, but upon, you know, collaborating with the police department, I think we can achieve that. But I want to go and circle back to my background. My background is in clinical social work, and I cannot stress enough the importance of building out our crisis responders. So clinicians and case managers that go up in the community and are able to respond to our neighbors that are in crises that don't require an armed response. And so that sector of the third rail, third department, so to speak, needs to be built out. In addition to that, I, after having conversations with Kenny Stewart at the fire department, they're woefully understaffed as well. And so they're eating up a lot of overtime. So the fire department also has a recruiting crisis as well that needs to be addressed. So it's multi-pronged, but I'll, again, you know, reemphasize, my clinical experience, I know that we do need more clinical responders out in the community to respond to crises. And then also, in addition to that, working upstream, making sure that we're providing folks the support that they need, so they don't circle into crisis and crime.
Lauren?
The police officer shortage is complex, nationwide, multifaceted. We have people aging out in large numbers, and then fewer people signing up for the job. It's a tough job. Police officers are experiencing 700 traumatic events for our civilians too. Ten times more likely to die of suicide than of an armed offender. So I personally, I'm not signing up for that job. It's a really tough job, and we need to support the officers we have with training, with mental health support, with physical health support. When we come, when we show that we are the best city to be a police officer, we will get the best officers. We want the cream of the crop. We want the anti-racist police officers. We want the anti-sexist police officers. We want to have the best force. And that, and we need to understand also that this is a multi-generational issue. The new generation doesn't have that same feeling about police, although many of us don't, like, many of the younger generation don't. They don't see the serve and protect. They see the, you know, blackened windows and tear gas. So we need to turn that around. We need to appeal to younger people who could be excellent officers if we show them that when you come to work in Seattle, you will be a part of your community. You will partner with people in your community. You will be welcomed by people in your community, and you will work with the community to establish public safety.
Phil?
So we absolutely need to reach a place where we have a properly-staffed police force. The rise in property crimes, the rise in violent crimes, and the completely unacceptable rise in gun violence in this city can be addressed, one, by having the right number of police, which is around 1,500. At the start of the year, we only had 785 officers. That is not enough to handle a city of this size that's especially growing and has a growing problem. Now, there are several things we can do, because in my opinion, 15 years as a public defender, I watched a lot of people in crisis where crimes are committed, and it's the root causes, not just a desire to be a criminal. You know, but the fact is, we need to understand that we need more solutions so that every crisis doesn't call for an armed response. But by the same token, we need to hold people accountable when they victimize others. We need to subsidize hiring from the fact that I think we need to be able to house officers in the neighborhoods that they're policing. One of the things the city could look to do is find ways to subsidize housing to bring officers into their communities. We need to do far more recruiting in communities of color and in migrant communities. For example, the East African community here in West Seattle is huge and vibrant, and I've talked to several of them about the fact that they would love to talk about the opportunity of their people that are coming of age to work to go and go to the police academy. We need to improve training. We need to drastically improve, I believe, the collaborative policing bureau. We have right now six supervisors and 20 community service officers. That needs to grow. So overall, we just need to expand those things and get a fully-trained, unbiased police force out there.
Thank you, Phil. And Stephen?
Thanks, Phil. We need to recruit with a wider range of outreach. We are losing out officers to neighboring towns and suburbs, even though we are paying more. We need to think of the range of compensation more creatively. If we're gonna bring people into a city like Seattle, what is it that they need to thrive in a city like Seattle? If we're gonna keep them happy in a city like Seattle, what is it that makes an officer's life a rewarding life in a city like Seattle? I, you know, when, you know, I'm supportive of hiring more officers, I'm also supportive of a range of frontline responders that has the officers pointed at the situations where they can add the most value, situations that are violent or victimization situations. So in my experience in retaining employees at Altana, I think would give me some baseline understanding of what it is, what range of things that people, people who are happy with their job receive, and I would bring that to play here.
Rob?
I think I win. Happy to talk again. Give it up.
Redo. Okay. Our next question is going to touch on behavioral health. Seattle behavioral health treatment providers are very concerned about the siloing of social service programs, which they see as a citywide systemic problem. Such siloing impedes coordinated treatment and efficient expenditure of city, county, and state funds for these programs. Providers want to create and maintain robust inter-agency relationships and channels of communication, which lead to better outcomes for the entire community and save taxpayer dollars by reducing duplication of services. What would you do to advocate for the changes behavioral health treatment providers seek? And now Preston?
Yes. Can you hear me now? Yes. So part of the answer is in that question, but I do advocate and always have advocated in the community for greater integration for providers, for mental health, primary care, and other ancillary services. We have that in the VA healthcare system, and that's why we have better outcomes, probably. In fact, I think the research supports that. So, yes, the answer is partly in that question, but one thing that we can do to support our behavioral health staff out on the frontlines is to increase their wages, but it's not only that, it's also increasing standards. So I've worked in, you know, a few places in my lifetime as a clinician where the, there's been dysfunction in administration and management, and so you just do not want to work there, no matter how much you're being paid. So we need to increase standards, we need to increase pay. I think the city council had proposed a very reasonable expectation that the wages increase with the index of inflation. But beyond the integration, I mean, that's the vital component of, you know, making sure that our treatment is integrated with, you know, medical, primary care, behavioral health, and other ancillary services. We'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Lauren?
As the mom of a foster kid adopted out of the foster care system with special needs, mental illness and trauma, we've been through this. I know how hard it is to navigate the system from the outside, and how fractured it is, and how, you know, there's not a good baton pass between one service and the next, or one age group and the next. And people are constantly falling through the cracks. So if this, if the same thing is happening inside the department where we have fracturing and siloing, I mean, we're seeing it on the outside. You know, I think we know, we need to, with any other department, similar to King County Regional Health Authority, or Homelessness Authority, eliminating bureaucracy, bringing things together. This is what I did at Amazon. We were constantly set up, almost intentionally, to be in competing organizations doing the same thing, and then you'd find out later that someone else is working on the same thing. We don't, we need to bring these things together, and that's what I did. I would find the different organizations, build the bridge, bring people together, and then stop duplicating efforts. When we have trust between the various organizations and a single plan to go forward, we will be able to solve the fracturing, the siloing, and deliver better care to the people who really need it.
Thank you. Phil?
So one of the issues with siloing is the fact that you don't share data. You don't share data, you get worse outcomes for people because you don't track what they're going through. The redundancies in the system, this leads to a lot of waste. We spend a lot of money once, twice, three times. So one of the things that I want to put in place is, several years ago, the Medicare-Medicate system created something called an accountable care organization, and they said to hospitals, we want to just go through one place to be able to provide services to people, and we want that organization to set up metrics with providers so they can track those outcomes, and there's a centralized intake. I want to do the same thing with Seattle, and that'll happen, working with the King County Regional Homeless Authority, is to set up a similar homelessness accountable care organization where, when someone shows up in an emergency room, the social worker at the emergency room has a centralized number that they go to. They can find out where this person is staying, where this person is getting services, and you can actually reach out to the service providers, the doctors, people in the mental health fields that are helping them, so that we don't duplicate our efforts. So this is part and parcel with the idea that we have to do a better job of just tracking the data of where we spend money and who's getting the good outcomes, so that we fund the organizations that are doing well. And like Preston can tell you, with the VA, they've had excellent results. You know, we've had excellent results out of the Salvation Army and other groups. So we need to find the organizations that are doing it right, help fund and subsidize those organizations, and make sure we do attack the siloing and the redundancy.
Thank you. Stephen?
I have firsthand experience with the siloing of behavioral health providers, and I have a profoundly disabled adult son, and he has, he, his mother and I, with our, both of us with MBAs, struggled to figure out how to help him navigate through the system, how to lead him to an outcome where he could live a life of meaning. My ex-wife became an ombudsperson to help people who had not the executive functioning that Asher's parents had. And we learned through that process that if you can have this one point of contact for the end receiver of the services, that one point of contact can help, you know, it's not exactly answering your question, but how to get rid of, how to fix silos, but it's one point of, a way to help end users bridge these silos that exist. So I would be an advocate for a system that has champion for each receiver of services and help that person navigate through the system.
Thank you. Rob?
Yeah, so there is absolutely too many silos here, and I feel like in Seattle in particular, we get hung up on, you know, on processes well. Too many silos, not enough coordination, not enough collaboration, and, you know, the result is pretty clear, or pretty clear, inefficiency, wasting of resources, wasting of time. And so, look, we, one thing we need to do is improve our processes, and as someone who has a diverse set of experiences, the folks in the business community are energized by my candidacy, because, you know, I've helped businesses of all sizes be successful. People who like and value, people with substantive community experience are energized by my campaign because of my firsthand personal experiences in communities. And people who like geek out about local policy are excited, because I have probably the most experience on this panel, of people that have served on numerous boards and commissions as appointed members. And in that ladder, I have built and shaped policies and processes that are community-led, equitable, fair, and transparent. I've done that work, continue to do that here, but we need to emphasize and anchor on this, the streamlining of the processes. And I mentioned earlier, like, some of the permitting, we tend to solve, so try to solve a lot of problems here in Seattle on our own. Not only do we need to look to other agencies within the city, other governments, but look to other, like, counties and states. Houston has been very successful in permitting, for example. So there is more we can do, let's do it.
Thank you. All right, our next question is about public safety. All of you on the panel here recently shared with the Seattle Times that your top priority is public safety. What is your vision? And we would love as much detail as possible. Your vision for solving what you consider to be the top public safety problems? And we'll start with Lauren.
Well, so, we need to, we need to start by rebuilding our police force, and I've already spoken about how we need to become the best place to be a police officer. We want to attract the best, we want to retain the best, we want to train the best, we want to have the best out in our communities, building trust and building relationships. So that's number one. Then we need to stand up the third department, the alternative response, and we need to do that with highly skilled, well-paid staff, so that we don't, we can't expect good results from a low-paid, high-turnover staff. We need to make sure that social workers, you know, mental health specialists are being paid living wages. Right now, they're being criminally underpaid, and we're not gonna get the results that we want to get if we continue to do that. We need to invest in gun violence education, make sure our kids have someplace to go, you know, Choose 180, or some of the programs that have been really successful, making sure that we're pushing upstream. We want to always get further upstream to address the problems before they become problems. That is actually the most efficient, most effective, and cheapest way to address all of these problems that we're facing. So community policing, family counseling, gun violence programs for kids, and other things like that.
Thank you. Phil?
Look, the single biggest Look, the single biggest thing we need to do is we need to have, excuse me, a well-trained, well-staffed police force. Right now, we are over two and a half years late on getting the next police contract in place, and when you're talking about bringing police officers from around the country, as with any industry when you're looking to hire, they need to know that there's a contract. So we need to get that in place, we need to make sure that there's good oversight there, but we need to improve the training. And in this process of actually getting to the point where we can have enough police officers where they might be able to walk beats in neighborhoods, that their just being there and being present isn't a deterrent in itself. We talked about before the fact property crime and violent crime and gun violence is all on the rise. The narrative that we continue to hear from the media is, "We have no police, and they won't enforce the laws, and they don't investigate." Well, I think if we just started having some of the victories that we actually do get in our communities talked about more, we're going to get a point where people aren't going to just think that they can go out and commit crime and not have any responsibility for that. The other thing that we need to do in doing this is actually enforce the laws. You know, the fact is, we have collaborative courts in the criminal justice system, like mental health court, drug court, unfortunately, the community court that the city attorney has just backed out of. These are the things, though, the community courts that work and the collaborative courts that work can attack the underlying problems when someone breaks the law if they're doing it for some other reason. So, we just need to make sure we use the tools we have.
Thank you. Stephen?
I'm going out and talking to people, first words out of everyone's mouth is the public safety issue, but the second words out of everyone's mouth are often very different. For business owners in the junction, it's the person who's been broken into three times, once when they were there. For other people, it's going downtown and just turning a corner and having to explain something to their daughter that they weren't prepared to explain. So, to say what the one solution is, I don't know, I agree with Phil, but laws on the books that aren't enforced make it not only difficult for the public to understand the rules, but makes it difficult for future laws that are contemplated. I support the hiring of more police officers, I support the better training of police officers, I support the holding police officers accountable for quick responses and for equitable responses. And, you know, I don't have the one solution, but I have a range of solutions that I think needs to address a multifaceted problem.
Rob?
Public safety situation is totally out of hand, and I live in Del Ridge, and Del Ridge is, we're experiencing a troubling rise of gun violence in the city, and Del Ridge, I'll tell you, is there in the brunt of it. And the Elkhai, with respect to the Whale Tail Park shooting, my kids were at that park three hours earlier, you know, right playing at the same sandbox where a man tragically lost his life. It's out of hand, we must hire more police, good, honest police, as many that are from this community right here as possible. That's my plan, hire more police, good, honest police, and, you know, fully empower these police to effectively carry out their public safety mandate, including by enforcing existing laws, but also want to set and enforce the highest standards of excellence and professionalism in these communities where police operate. Third thing I want to do is swiftly hold them accountable if and when they fail to carry out their public safety mandate. And I don't know how all three of these things taken together got to be so controversial, but here we are. Police are constantly on a response posture, namely because of staffing issues, and as a result, unable to build trust, unable to perform foot patrols, you know, be more proactive in these communities. How are we going to build trust if all you're doing is responding to one thing, one incident after the other? We need police to impart, more police to impart, help build trust in communities. And that is my plan.
Thank you. Preston?
Yes. Yes, yes. Yes, we need to add police staff, please. Yes, we need to add police staff, our prior department, to include the ancillary services like Health One. And yes, we definitely need to build up our crisis responders, include clinicians and case managers that will go out to the community to address people in crises. However, also, we need to address the upstream effects. So just going back to my sociological background, there's a kind of lofty term called reciprocal determinism, and essentially, the idea is that if you live in an impoverished area, you're more likely going to, you know, be one of those statistics. I grew up in Tacoma, in a very poor area, and a lot of my peers ended up, you know, derailed in a life of crime or other areas where they weren't able to succeed. So we definitely need to address poverty throughout the city. How we go about doing that, again, I'm going to go back to my experience and expertise of, you know, being a clinician and making sure that we're housing our most vulnerable, because oftentimes, what I've seen in my experience, people that are vulnerable, you know, with severe persistent psychiatric disorders that are aged and disabled and/or have significant addictive issues, those persons are oftentimes exploited financially, sexually, and in other ways, and that just contributes to the criminal behavior that we see in pockets of the community. So when we get to address that and house our most vulnerable, I think that we begin to see a difference in our communities. And then, again, further upstream, ensure that we're addressing poverty, you know, at the early stage on our way up. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is going to address the climate. Seattle is a climate-sensitive city, particularly vulnerable to the effects of wildfires, sea level rise, ocean acidification, drought, deforestation, pollinator die-offs, and more. Scientists are predicting a one and a half degree Celsius rise in global temperature by 2027. What measures would you champion? Again, we love the details here today. What measures to reduce these climate impacts as Seattle prepares for the inevitable repercussions of climate change?
I believe, am I first on this one?
Phil, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, the sad truth is, as we talk about climate change, we've missed a lot of deadlines to be able to halt these things, and we are really in a damage control setting now. But there clearly are things we can do. I mean, if people think back to how 2020 started when COVID shut things down, you know, all of a sudden, LA wasn't bathed in smog, there were people in Nepal that could see parts of the Himalayas that they hadn't seen in forever. This planet is incredible at helping heal itself if we do things like reducing our admissions and are better stewards of the environment. In my work with the Seattle Green Spaces Coalition, one of the things we try to do is make sure that we actually put preserving our tree canopy, preserving our watershed, you know, those things need to be upfront, not just a secondary thing if they're convenient after we pay for developing new housing. You know, when we build, we need to build intelligently, and luckily, I think the council's done a great job at setting up a lot of standards for better green building, but we need to electrify our fleets. We need to also, I don't know who remembers when all of the sewage wastewater poured into Puget Sound from one of our facilities, yet who was held accountable? Who kept talking about that? We seem to set those things aside way too easily, so I believe that it is crucial for us to partner with those intellectual minds in our community, like at U Dub and other places around here, that understand how to be good stewards, and we just need to focus on that.
Thank you. Stephen?
I think cities themselves hold the key to the climate challenges we face. When people gather together, we have opportunities to reduce everyone's climate carbon impact on the world, and my best contribution to helping Seattle lead on climate is to make Seattle a more dense, more vibrant, more, we all are living closer together, living closer to our work, getting in our cars less, living an urban life, whether it's Seattle and all the other cities in the United States and around the world. I think the most powerful impact that we can make is with a new urbanization model that brings us all into this together, has us feeling like we want to be around each other, like, the social infrastructure's there to support a vibrant life, living shoulder to shoulder rather than spread out over suburb to suburb.
Thank you. Rob?
I support climate justice. Look, this District One now no longer just includes West Seattle, it's expanded and now includes South Park and Georgetown and the Duwamish Valley, some of the most impacted and, you know, well, yeah, some of the most impacted communities that we have in this city, and they need help, and I'm here to do that. And so, look, there's this whole effort underway for the, like, Duwamish Valley cleanup effort, and we need to do the work of talking to experts, including folks at U Dub and other policy subject matter experts, but we also need to make sure we're validating that with the communities themselves, because a well-laid plan, a well-designed plan is great, but if no one's using it, not so much, and if no one supports it, not so much. So we need to make sure we're always listening to impacted communities and to tailor our climate approach to a manner that makes sense to them and is going to be adoptable by these specific communities. Also, look, no secret, we need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, and so that's why I support expanding our transit options to make sure that as many people take transit as possible and get out of their cars and carpool and take, you know, expanding our transit. So that's how I would solve the problem. It's complex.
Thank you. Preston?
Yes, sir. Yes. Seattle City Council needs to establish a tenth committee that would be the environmental and social justice committee with an intense focus on environmental issues. We need to step into high gear to kind of focus on that, and I believe, you know, setting up a committee would help begin that process. So, I think everyone here agrees that we need to increase density, but housing construction, building construction oftentimes is a great emitter of carbon emissions as well, you know, production of concrete emits a lot of carbon. So, as we establish that tenth committee, we're able to identify where we can extract the greatest deficiencies as we build up density, as we electrify our fleets, as we, you know, increase electrical options down to the port for ships to plug in, to increase electrification of trucks down in the port. There's a host of issues that can be addressed when we work together, but I believe, you know, setting up a committee that is specific to working on those issues, and we are far behind where we need to be, but increasing density, increasing electrification of the city's fleet, making sure that we're collaborating with King County Metro to make sure that all their fleets are electrified, and that we're also able to provide smaller electric shuttles that go deeper into our neighborhoods that provide real transit options for people that use public transit. I've been up in the northwest portion of West Seattle, and a lot of those buses have been closed, but these are just a few of the issues that we can begin working on. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen?
So, the climate crisis is here, we aren't ready, we've all seen the heat domes, we have smoke season, we had an atmospheric river combined with King Tide and South Park that flooded in December. We are not doing nearly enough fast enough, and unfortunately, with the climate crisis, winning slowly is the same as losing. We need to vastly and urgently increase our response as a city, as a state, really as a country, as a planet. The first things we need to do are address the two largest carbon emitters, it's transportation and building emissions, so we have our building emissions performance standards, we need to meet those by, I would pull that in, to 2035. We can't keep, we're going to run out of time before we run out of money, and we're just not moving fast enough. So, we need to, you know, address transportation and buildings, and then within District One in particular, we have the Duwamish Valley, so we need to electrify our port, we need to electrify short-haul trucking. And here's the good news, the Inflation Reduction Act is a once-in-a-generation opportunity with hundreds, literally hundreds of billions of dollars on the table to pay for these projects. I'd also love to see South Seattle College, and I've been talking to them about this, become the school of nationally recognized college to train our kids for the challenges and the jobs we're going to need to address this problem.
Thank you. All right. Our next question is about community. The relationship between Seattle Police and Black and Brown communities has been overshadowed by a difficult history resulting in a mutual lack of trust. What policies would you support in your first term that would build trust between marginalized communities and the SPD and make sure members of these communities feel safe and included as a vibrant part of Seattle? Oh, and we will start with Stephen.
Well, to be able to select the policies and champion the policies, I would need to be able to talk to these communities firsthand in much greater extent than I have so far in this campaign. I would go out in the communities and listen to the ways people think that they have felt connected over the years and the ways that they felt alienated, and respond to that as a baseline starting point. I'm sorry I'm not able to offer specifics because I'm not well-versed in this, in the specifics, things that have been tried in the past. I profoundly recognize that my experience in police is not representative in any way of people of colors' experience in police, and I would have to, you know, get right in there and understand that better to be able to advocate for this.
Rob?
Well, I am well-versed in this, and I don't need to talk to anyone because I come from these communities, and like I mentioned earlier, I've experienced police brutality firsthand, and, you know, and I know the distress that exists, and so, these are complex nuanced issues, and I plan to, in part, hire more police officers to build trust. Again, if all our officers are doing is constantly responding to whatever crisis or emergency, getting people up, how on earth are we going to build trust? If you talk to the resident, like, some of the residents of the Central District that actually still live there because of displacement, the Central District today is not the Central District 20 years ago, 10 years ago even. You talk to some of the Black members of the historical Central District about policing and how to improve trust, one of the most cited, like, positive programs that we had was the community policing program where, you know, we had officers that were out in these communities doing foot patrols, they knew the community leaders firsthand, they were talking to them regularly, had regular conversations, and that is the type of work, that's how you build trust. And if we don't have officers, staffing, and personnel, how are we going to start to do that work? So, look, I'm well-versed, I come from these communities, and I understand the important balancing needs that need to be met.
Thank you. Preston?
Yes, so, this is an issue that is definitely personal for me, you know, I grew up in Tacoma in the 80s and 90s, Tacoma's a pretty violent place, and in fact, my grandmother's home and then also my auntie's home were subject to drive-by shootings with the gang activity in Tacoma. But one thing that kind of turned around was when we involved the community to be at the table to talk about solutions, and we have the opportunity right now. This program that doesn't get a lot of media attention, but I've spoken to the researcher at Seattle University, Jaclyn Helfcott, who runs a micro policing program with the SPD, so she coordinates with SPD and coordinates with the communities throughout Seattle, and she's able to bring people to the table, and based upon what I've seen, that program definitely has room to grow. So it's important that we reach out to those community leaders that are responsible for engaging their neighbors and having forums where we talk about these issues and talk about viable solutions. I would go back to my social background, I would love to have recurring, regular forums out there in the community, whether it's in North West Seattle, High Point where I live, down in South Park, or Georgetown, but to have forums where we're talking amongst each other, with each other, instead of, you know, a council member at a dice, where you're talking at them in this kind of one-way direction. So I hope to have a community event where we talk with each other and figure out solutions.
Thank you. Maureen?
So, I think the modern, like, the current anti-racism lens that we've developed really helps us see that racism is everywhere, just embedded and threaded throughout every, like, every aspect of society. So we, first of all, need to admit that, address that. So we, first of all, need to admit that, address that, educate for that. We're not going to be, we're not going to solve the problems until we get to that root of the problem. Safety means different things to different people. We can't expect that an armed officer coming to your house is always the response that you want. Someone that might be absolutely what they need. And for other people, that might be that they don't even want, call 911. So we need to build, rebuild trust. One of the things that I would love to see is police and communities partnering together to fix the built environment. There's, you know, there's aspects of the built environment, broken windows, tagging, painting, whatever, that can kind of feel like it's creating this atmosphere of lawlessness. And we might just not like it anyways. What if we all get our hands dirty together and we repaint the walls? We fix the windows. We clear out the empty, the vacant lot where there's drug trafficking going on. But, you know, beyond that, we always need to look upstream at poverty, drug addiction, and substance abuse and mental health.
Thank you. Phil?
Actually, could you reread the question?
You bet. The relationship between Seattle police and Black and Brown communities has been overshadowed by a difficult history resulting in a mutual lack of trust. What policies would you support in your first term that would build trust between marginalized communities and the SPD and make sure that their members feel safe and included as a vibrant part of Seattle?
Thank you. So what's really interesting, Captain Pierre Davis, who is African-American, was the commander here at the Southwest Precinct. He now runs the Collaborative Policing Bureau. And I sat on the Southwest Precinct Advisory Committee. And we would talk a lot about this exact issue, that how do we overcome a history of racism? How do we overcome biased policing? How do we overcome, you know, the lack of trust and respect that we've gotten to? And the thing we would talk about was going into the communities. And, excuse me, is the leader, you know, the city council member, going into the community with the police to talk to community members? For example, in the East African community, High Point. Sorry. My apologies. A group of the mothers in the East African community came to me and said there was an incredible disconnect they were having with their teenage male children. And how could we help bring them back into the fold and be more law-abiding? And so we talked about actually starting a conversation between SPD and those youths and the moms so the community could hear from police officers in a non-threatening way. And I think one of the things that the council member can do is help bridge that gap between communities of color and the police in a way that's not threatening but is collaborative. So I think there are things we can do, especially expanding the Community Service Officer Program through the Collaborative Policing Bureau. Because having people from the Police Department show up in a community that are not armed is going to help bridge that gap.
Thank you. Our next question is about a very recent vote that the council took this past week. The Seattle City Council voted five to four against a measure to give the city attorney authority to prosecute drug possession and public drug usage. You shared at a forum this past week how you would have voted if on the council. Can you please remind us here right now of how you would have voted and share your rationale? And we will start with Rob.
Yes, I would have voted yes. And since then, I released a statement to expound upon that a little bit. But let me share with you here as well. One, that measure would have, you know, put us in line directly with existing state law. We're not going more harsh. We are, we are, we are 100%. That would have put us in line 100% with state law. And, and so, you know, we need these enforcement mechanisms and tools and resources as well to make sure people are literally dying on the streets. Literally dying on the streets, folks. And the, the turn of your back and do nothing, it's not working. So this is an additional tool to, you know, to, you know, make sure people have access to treatment and resources. And it is both a public, and I think it recognizes the public safety aspect of this. And yes, there is a strong public safety aspect of this. But also the public health aspect of this. And so, yes, I would have supported it. But I would also would have went further to make sure we're diverting people who are suffering from these debilitating drug dependency challenges to make sure that they have the, the support and treatment services they need. Because I know personally firsthand who's probably likely going to be the most impacted. And, and, and so we, we need to do better. But yes, I would have supported it.
Thank you. Preston?
Yes, I would have supported that to be consistent with state law. My rationale for that, and I, I'm a clinician. I've worked extensively with folks with significant addictions issues. And I understand that the life of addiction is, is harsh and is terrible. And the road to recovery oftentimes involves many, many episodes of relapse. On the DA side, we have our therapeutic court. On the civilian side, you have your therapeutic court. So you have diversion programs that are in place. I, I feel that in city situations, sometimes we allow perfect to be the enemy of good. So we definitely need to build out our diversion programs. That's very clear that we need to do that. We do have diversion programs in place. It definitely needs to be built out so we can meet the demand because the demand is significantly there. But my main concern is that I've actually seen situations in business, you know, just going back. I'll just, you know, provide an anecdote. My client will say, you know, Preston, I don't want to be placed in this project-based housing in downtown Seattle because I want to maintain my abstinence and I want to stay clean. But I know if you place me there, I'm going to end up relapsing because there's drug use, there's drug dealing. And we just have, are creating throughout the city these vortexes that draw people back into addictions and depth. Last year, we lost over 1,000 people. This year, it's looking to be higher because of the rate of, you know, overdose deaths increasing. So I'd like to change that.
Thank you. And Lauren, go ahead.
Again, just to set the record straight, as Teresa Muscata said, there was no need for us to pass our own ordinance to be in line with the state. And we also need to, like, let's not fool ourselves. Incarceration doesn't work and it will not decrease deaths. It will increase deaths. People are 15 to 40% more likely, 15 to 40, times more likely to die of overdose coming out of jail than, than otherwise. We need to rather move swiftly. We, we, I get it. We don't need to, we can lead with compassion and still refuse to accept harmful behavior. There's, that's, that's a given. But we need to do the things that will work. And incarceration just doesn't work. In fact, it makes it worse. So I think it's pretty clear I voted no. And, and mainly because of that, similar to the way that Councilmember Alex Peterson said, it's very concerning that right when we're rushing to pass this unnecessary ordinance, we're also shuttering community court, which has, has evident, very promising evidence of support. And we do not have the diversion programs necessary. And our courts are clogged, our officers are stressed. And we don't need, we don't need to be using those resources to do that. And it doesn't work.
Thank you. Phil?
Quite simply, I would have voted yes. However, that also did get me in hot water with some of my public defender friends who did not like that answer. And the truth is, we have such a nuanced problem with this right now that we need to get a better handle on it. And I think actually Councilmember Muscata did bring up some of those exact things. I have not talked to a single person who thinks drug, public drug use is appropriate, okay? So therefore, having that be a criminalized act isn't really the problem. It's what do we do with that? You know, shutting down the community court, this didn't help. But those collaborative courts, and I can tell you, 15 years as a public defender, getting people into mental health and drug court, that's the way to get them on the right path. Because the whole point there is not to punish. It is actually to get them to the next level, to help, to support, to rehabilitate. That's not going to happen if we decide to decriminalize things. And so, now granted, there is the issue of, was it the right time? Did we need to do it now? And maybe not. But I'm still going to stick to the fact that I believe public drug use should be a criminal offense. And we can use our criminal justice system as that safety net to help people who find themselves in the situation when they're doing that. So I support it. But the fact is, we still need to back that up with collaborative courts and to understand that help is going to be the thing that's going to really change this in the long run, not creating more crimes.
Thank you. Stephen?
I also would have voted yes. And, but yet I agree with Lauren that incarcerating addicts is not the way to go. But take, stripping the government of its, of the tools it might use to, to get public drug use down to a reasonable level is also not the way to go. So I would have given more tools to try to incentivize and lead the city to a better outcome than it has now. You know, I both look at the enforcement mechanisms for the city for fairness and effectiveness, but also the rest of us. What is, what is fair and effective for the rest of us? The people who, who feel that the streets don't belong to them anymore and we can't go out with their families in environments where there's public drug use. So I, I'm for more, where it might have not been a perfect mechanism, I'm for more mechanisms that give the city a range of responses. So I would have voted yes.
Thank you. All right. Got another question here. Seattle City Council will experience, as you know, a significant turnover after this next election. And some critical committees will be losing their chairs. If elected to the city council, how do you intend to fill the leadership gaps and build consensus between yourself, the rest of the council, and the mayor to get your priorities passed? Oh, and we will start with Preston.
Yes, I hope to serve on the Safety and Human Services Committee. So taking over Councilmember Herbolt's spot. And I think that'll be an effective use of my experience and expertise. And then just demonstrating, you know, my expertise. I hope that, you know, I earn the trust of my peers on the council and come up with great ideas to, to implement with regard to homelessness, with regard to the addictions crises, with regard to the, the safety issues throughout the city. So in, in short, I, I think, you know, just, you know, certainly on that committee, you know, provides me an opportunity to, to demonstrate that I'm committed to the city. I'm committed to my community. And I'm able to offer the, the expertise based upon my background of being a clinical social worker.
Well, thank you. Lauren?
Say this? Okay, you're good. It takes a second. At Amazon, we used to say, "Business moves at the speed of trust." And I love that saying. I would say, "Government moves at the speed of trust." It will be so important to be able to build those relationships with so many new people in council. I would humbly take guidance from the people who are, have been there longest and know a whole lot more than anyone sitting at this table, as, you know, wonderfully skilled as we all might be. And, and then I would, you know, do the same things that I've done in, you know, Amazon or in Big Tech, like, highly competitive, highly cutthroat environments, yet finding the ways to bring people together, build trust so that you can get the work done and deliver the results. So it's very much people skills, building trust, all of those types of things that, that come with age, honestly. We get smarter as we get older, wiser, I guess, hopefully both. But, and I also think that the mayor, this current mayor, I think is, has shown that he's more willing to, you know, bring people in, even if he doesn't necessarily agree with them. And I think that's a really positive sign that we can all work together and get stuff done.
Thank you. And Phil?
So I can tell you that the collaborative process in criminal law is one where you've got to deal with bringing together people who are very far apart on where they start. You know, you've got a victim, you have a defendant, you have a prosecutor, you have a judge. You have potentially mental health services, you've got the bailiff, you've got probation, you've got families that were involved. And when you try to negotiate a plea in a situation where people have been hurt, people are not looking to come out and agree. But I've spent close to 20 years bringing people together in that exact type of setting. I did the same thing in business when I had a store and when I had a video game company. I've done that at the local level with things like the District One Community Network and the Morgan Community Association. On a much smaller level, you end up with these moments where you get a room of 20 people in. You're talking about a project to support your community. And everybody's got their plan that they want to see go through. And you've got to be able to listen. I think I'm an outstanding listener. I don't enter into a situation thinking I know everything. I am totally willing to admit that I'm wrong. I'm willing to learn. And I want to learn. I want to hear from the people who know what's going on. And what I can tell you is, I get along incredibly well with Mayor Harrell. I know some of the other people on city council and the ones that are running for it. I'm very well-versed with Ann Davidson at the city attorney's office. I know people in the police department and the firefighters. And the fact is, when you look at all of this, you come in and you need trust, you need respect. And I can bring that to this situation at all levels.
Thank you. Stephen?
I think the question you were asking was, you know, where would we point ourselves? And that's a great question. I think my skills, experiences, and insights would have me best pointed at being a support person for small business, helping be involved in rejuvenating downtown's vitality. And then in the transit sphere as well, I think I would be a good addition to the Sound Transit Board. The, the way I think I could help best in a new group of people is understanding how to help other people's ideas become actionable plans. I think I, my temperament and my, my planning ability allows me to sort of understand what each person needs to get out of something that they're excited about. And instead of trying to convince anybody of anything, figure out how everybody can get a little bit of what they want. I think that kind of temperament, that kind of pragmatism, that kind of creativity is really a mix that Seattle desperately needs right now.
Thank you. Rob?
Where could I help out the most? Well, I guess based off of my personal experiences, professional, you know, in life, just lived experiences, community experiences, I think I could probably be the most helpful on the Public Safety Committee. And given the complexity and nuance involved and given the, the strong community involvement, that is just one area where, you know, I, I am very passionate about. Because now more than ever, in the issue of public safety, communities don't need a savior. We need people with these direct personal experiences that understand the complexity and nuance, like I mentioned. And, and I, I think I could add the most value there. Also, economic development. You know, I've helped businesses of all sizes succeed and entrepreneurs succeed and be successful. I, I think I could help there. I am committed to working with my fellow council members, whoever they are. And this mayor, who, by the way, I served as an appointed member in the Police Chief Search Committee. I've worked with them before, to, to be successful. And, and you all. I have my own ideas, which we talked about here. But I'll never forget, I'm here to serve you all, the people of this district. And I'll make sure everything I do in City Hall is 100% informed by your, your views and your perspectives. And, look, I've served on so many boards and commissions. I thought I was just a justice reform person. Then I got to geek out on local census data and redraw the legislative boundaries in King County. So doesn't matter. Put me in the game, coach. Throw me the ball. I'm here to represent you.
Thank you. And thank you all candidates for your really diverse, wide, thoughtful answers that are really addressing some of our most compelling and urgent issues of the day. Those are all of our questions. I'd like to go now to our closing remarks. And so everyone has one minute. And we will go ahead and start with Lauren.
Well, first of all, thank you for being here. Thank you for listening to us. Thank you for caring enough about this process to show up. That's, that's fantastic. I'm so excited about this campaign. I'm so excited about this campaign, I'm happy about the support I'm receiving from my community, from my family. I was the only candidate in any of the four open races to receive a sole endorsement from MLK Labor Council, I also have an endorsement from UFCW, IBEW46 and Teresa Mosqueta, council member Teresa Mosqueta. I've built a great team and they're delivering results out of the gate. So the voters of District One will have a decision to make on August 1st. We can be fear-based and reactionary and unprepared for the future or we can be evidence-based, solution-oriented, swift acting and we can show the nation what a successful west coast city looks like. My entire career has taught me to listen closely, to mediate, to experiment and when we get the data and we know what works, to lead powerfully and boldly and that's what you can expect from me on City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil?
Thank you and again, thank you to the 34th and thank you to everybody coming out today. We are in a position right now where we're going to be voting on our next representative for District One. District One has grown, we've added South Park, I'm sorry, South Park, sorry, we've added Soto and Georgetown and Pioneer Square and it's a bigger, more diverse area. We need someone who understands public service, we need someone who understands what it means to be an advocate and we need someone who understands what it means to represent a community. I've lived here for 25 years and I have been involved with almost every single charitable organization here, helping them raise money, helping them get awareness and helping them be involved. I want to be a public servant for you. As a lawyer, as a judge, as a business owner, as a teacher, all of the skills that I've put together in my life have come to the point now where I want to serve everybody in the place I live. I think this city is amazing, I think this neighborhood is amazing and I ask you for your vote, your support and your endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob? Uh, sorry, Stephen?
Thank you to the 34th and thank you to all of you for giving us some of your weekend. When a city faces challenges like this city's facing right now, it needs a mix of imagination and pragmatism to get its way out of it. Pragmatism alone won't work because you need to see things that haven't yet been done and imagination becomes just a battle of ideas and everyone just sticks to their guns. I bring a mix of that creativity and pragmatism, I think I could bring that to City Hall. I thank you for listening to me today and I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob?
Thank you 34th and thank you everyone for showing up, being here today. I humbly ask for your vote. Today we are at a critical inflection point. We can either choose and elect, more of the same, or we can go for a bold way forward for our city, one that recognizes the importance of collaboration and working together collectively and instead of trying to divide us with wedge issue after wedge issue, we can unite and orient ourselves on solutions and I am here to do exactly that. I am proud of my experience in this race. Again, strong business experience, strong civic experience, strong service-oriented experience, strong personal firsthand direct experiences. Look, and I mentioned earlier, I, it's strange to think, but I am the longest-serving 34th member candidate, I'm the 34th candidate and I would love to earn your support. I'm proud of the strong grassroots support that we have as evidenced by democracy vouchers, but more than that, I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Preston?
Yes, so I became a social worker not to make millions of dollars but to help people and that has been my trademark for my entire adult life after leaving the military. So I left the military in 2006 and I settled in Top Hat, part of the 34th District, back in 2006, I lived in Top Hat for about three years. And after the military, I worked at union jobs, I've been in union for pretty much most of my life, but I just want to underscore that I am running to help people, that is just in my nature, my grandmother taught me those values and I actually lived out those values recently, three years ago, I actually traveled 3,000 miles across the country to South Carolina to work on voter suppression issues. I had the opportunity to work at Joint Base Lewis McCord making more money, but I chose to move across the country because that is something I was passionate about and I wanted to live out my values. I'm going to live out my values on the city council and I hope to earn your vote and I definitely need your support, so I'm asking you today to volunteer, to, I don't know if you can say donate, I need your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. It has been a pleasure to have you here and we wish you all very good luck on your campaigns and we will see you around the district.